Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client. And if you're here to testify on any matter that's on the agenda, come forward. Be sworn in by Mr. Picaro. And in both instances, please spell your name for the commission's reporter. With that being said, commissioners, I see we have some minutes.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the ninth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the ninth meeting are approved. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-16676 from JHK Hawaii. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Ferreira, representing or with my client, Mr. M. Sangsu Im from JHK Hawaii.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Can you spell your client's name, please?
First name, S.A.N.G.S.U.I.M.
Thank you. Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to review the investigator's report?
Yes, no changes.
Very good. Mr. Picaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. The applicant met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioner?
Okay. Motion to approve transfer application number 19-16676. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-16676 is approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number two, application number 19-16252 from Podmore LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Niogota appearing on behalf of Podmore LLC. To my right is Catherine Nomura, a member. We have no changes to this investigative report.
Thank you. Mr. Picaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests and zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioner?
Motion to approve application number 19-16252. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number 19-16252 is approved.
Thank you.
Moving into the special license applications, agenda item number three, application number 20-20681-1 through 20-20681-9 inclusive, from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, Mr. Picaro, Robert Uyoka on behalf of HSI Joint Venture Company. Present to my right, Ms. Chris Wong. She is a Senior Director of Operations. First name, C.H.R.I.S., last name, W.O.N.G. At this time, we have nothing to add to this investigator's report. This is for the Honolulu National Airport.
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve application number 20-20681-1 to 20-20681-9. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, applications number 20-20681-1 through 20-20681-9 are approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number four, applications number 20-20682-1 through 20-20682-2 from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Robert Uyoka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Present to my right, Ms. Chris Wong, Senior Director of Operations. At this time, we have nothing to add to this investigator's report. This is also for the Honolulu National Airport.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve application number 20-20682-1 to 20-20682-9. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, applications number 20-20682-1 through 20-20682-9 inclusive are approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number five, application number 20-20556 from Karai LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Garrett Kamai, Managing Member of Karai LLC, K.A.M.E.I.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve temp application number 20-20556. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number 20-20556 from Karai LLC is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, request number 20-20491 from TCK Corp, DBA Root Business.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Greg Nishio, a present agent for TCK Corporation. We have received investigative process report. No changes to this investigator's report.
Thank you. Line?
Motion to approve request number 20-20491. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, request number 20-20491 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, request number 20-20539 from Foodland Supermarket Limited.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, Mr. Picaro, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited. Present to my right, Mr. Andrew Kawano. He's the Senior Director of Finance. First name, K.A.N.D.R.E.W., last name, K.A.W.A.N.O. At this time, we have nothing to add to this investigator's report. This is for a reduction to allow for a restaurant in existing Foodland Farms Amuana. And also, a reduction to allow an extension of, a small extension of the bar in the middle.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve request number 20-20539. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, request number 20-20539 is approved.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Calling agenda item number eight, request number 20-20673 from Key Ventures LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner. Members of the Commission, Bert Kawasaki representing KI Ventures, B.U.R.T.K.A.W.A.S.A.K.I. No changes to the investigator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kawasaki. Trick or treat?
Motion to approve request number 20-20673. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, request number 20-20673 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number nine. This is from the Liquor Administrator Review of Application Number 18-14249 from Root LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission. In this matter, they are in the middle of construction now. And they are, if we're seeing, probably in the early January. So if we're going to have a date in January 31st, would be an appropriate date.
So there's no action required?
You want an extension to?
January 31st.
January 31st.
Yeah, you want it, okay. Commissioners, can I have a motion for, to continue this matter till January 31st?
Extend the application.
Extend. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Motion to approve application number 18-14249 to extend to January 31st, 2020.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number 18-14249 is extended till January 31st, 2020.
Thank you.
Number 10 from the Liquor Administrator Review of Application Number 19-14719 from Foodland Supermarkets Limited. Mr. Uyoka, how much time do you need, sir?
Mr. Chair, if possible, request for about a one year, October 1st of 2020. We're having construction delays. We're in the process of opening other stores. We just did on Pacific, sorry, Pearl City Gateway, and we're looking at Comic Con at least. So just based on the other construction, if possible, request to October 1st, 2020, if possible.
Okay, let me test them. Mr. Picaro, did you, you have all of that information? Thank you very much for directing. Commissioners? Yep?
Motion to approve application number 19-14719 extending to October 1st, 2020. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 10, application number 19-14719 is extended till October 1st, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number 11 from the Administrator, application number 19-15209 from Mazuru LLC. Mr. Gota?
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Niogota appearing on behalf of Mazuru LLC. To my right is Tom Park, a member. We're requesting an extension till end of March, so March 31st, 2020. We had construction and permitting delays.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 19-15209 extending to March 31st, 2020. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 11, application number 19-15209 is extended till March 31st, 2020.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 12 from the Administrator, application number 19-15218 from Broken Boundary Brewery LLC. Gentlemen, how much many?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, my name is Bill Sumreal. I'm a member and owner of Broken Boundary Brewery LLC. That's William W.I.L.L.I.A.M.S.U.M.R.O.W. Hello, my partner, introduce yourself.
Christopher Cook, also a member, C.H.R.I.S.T.O.P.H.E.R.C.O.O.K.
Thank you. How much many?
I'm sorry?
How much many? How long do you need, sir?
We would, we would like to extend it till March 31st, as we've hit construction and permitting delays.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Motion to approve application number 19-15218 extending to March 31st, 2020. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 20, excuse me, agenda item number 12, application number 19-15218 is extended till 31 March 2020. Thank you very much. Commissioners, can I have a type of action on the adoption of decision and order?
Yes, Chair. Motion for the adoption of decision and order for the items 13 through 19 inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number 13 through 19 inclusive are approved.
Good afternoon. Joy Neely, Deputy Cooperation Counsel appearing for today's adjudication items. To my left is Etico Reyes, the Commission Auditorium.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number 20, Latour Cafe.
Good afternoon. My name is Ian Yamashita.
Excuse me, your first name again? I missed that.
I.A.N.
Ian.
The charges, licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on November 4th, July 31st, 2019. A report is directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the 12 months beginning July 1st, 2018, ending July 30th, 2019, in violation of Rule 38117.54, see of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 20, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation of GLS report that was filed 19 days late. It's such a request to fine of $300.
Any comment?
We do accept responsibility for not filing on time. There was miscommunication between management as to who was going to file the reports. And also, we stopped selling alcohol. So for the one location that we do serve alcohol at, we did file on time.
So you folks, are you selling alcohol at this location?
No.
Okay. Could you, have you put your license in safekeeping or?
Yes, I believe we do. I believe we do still have the license, but yeah, we're not serving alcohol.
You can always come during regular business hours and talk to the clerks to see about how to cancel that license. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $300.
Second.
Agenda item number 20, the recommended fine of $300, excuse me, been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 20, recommended fine of $300 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 21. Thank you. Latour Cafe, Pearl City. Introduce yourself again, please.
Ian Yamashita.
Can you wave reading of the charge? Do you wave it? The same one as?
Oh, yes.
How would you like to plead? Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 21, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a first violation of late filing of the GLS report. It was filed 19 days late. I recommend a fine of $300.
Mr. Yamashita? Are you folks selling alcohol at this location?
No. And I believe we actually canceled our liquor license as well for this one.
Do we have record of that, Ms. Neely?
I don't have with me.
Mr. Yamashita, but when did you cancel it?
Um, when, like, sorry.
Ms. Reyes has it. Do you have, thank you, Ms. Reyes.
The license for, license was not renewed.
It wasn't renewed. Okay. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 21, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Calling agenda item number 22, Latour Cafe. One more time, please.
Ian Yamashita. I.A.N.Y.A.M.A.S.H.I.T.A.
Thank you.
Do you wave reading of the charge? And how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 22, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a first violation. The GLS report was filed 19 days late. I recommend a fine of $300.
And which location is this? This is your Hawaii Kai location?
Yes.
And you folks still selling alcohol at this location?
No.
What's the status of your license?
We didn't renew it as well.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 22, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 23, strip steak.
This licensee was, contacted me and was unavailable to appear today and requested a continuance to October 31st. I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item 23 to October 31st.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 23 is continued to October 31st, 2019. Correct?
Yes, Chair.
Calling agenda item number 24, Pub, Public House.
Aloha, I'm Serena Hashimoto. I'm the owner of Public House.
What's your first name again?
Serena.
Do you wave reading of the charge?
Yes, I do.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 24, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a first violation. The GLS, GLS report was filed 20 days late in this case. I recommend a fine of $300.
Ms. Hashimoto, any comment?
Yeah, I just apologize. I'm in the process of trying to retire and turn the businesses over to my daughter, and we just hit a little snag here with this one. Just nothing but sorry.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $300.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 24, the recommended fine of $300 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 25, Ono Loco Tacos.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Alex Janeway Chan, P.I.N.A.L.E.S.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Can you spell your name again?
P.E.I.N., P as in Paul, I.N.A.L.E.S.
Got to catch him on the road.
What was your first name?
John.
John. I don't hear too good, you know? Getting older over here.
That's Hispanic speak very rough.
What did you say, Picaro? No habla español.
Go ahead, Ms. Neely. Do you wave reading of the charge?
Yes.
How would you like to plead?
No contest, but an explanation is possible.
Sure. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 25, the no contest plea is accepted.
Your recommendation, Ms. Neely?
This is a first violation. The GLS report was filed 24 days late. I recommend a fine of $300.
Sir, explanation?
Well, my dad passed away, and I went back to California, didn't get it filed. That's the best I can tell you without getting too emotional about it. How much mercy?
Sorry to hear about that, sir. And how long have you been in business?
Three and a half years. Well, we only had the license just shortly. We had zero sales in alcohol. So I, I knew I had to do it, but since we had zero sales in alcohol, I was kind of like, I just left. There's no excuse, don't worry. I just, I had to.
Motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 25, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Calling agenda item number 26, Siam Paradise Restaurant.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sam Ballepianta. Sam is like uncle, and Ballepianta, B.E.L.L.A.P.I.A.N.T.A. I represent, my representation is not available because he had a stroke this year, so he...
And so you're the owner of the restaurant?
Yes.
Do you wave reading of the charge?
With explanation.
No, do you want me to read the charge to you?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read. Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on November 4th, July 31st, 2019. A report is directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the 12 months beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, in violation of Rule 38117.54, see of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. How would you like to plead, sir?
No contest.
Motion to accept.
If I could explain why.
Sure. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 26, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This, this is a first violation. This report was filed 24 days late. And just for the record, the last report was filed 22 days late. I did, I recommend a fine of $300.
Sir?
Well, my working partner, I'm just a silent partner, working partner, her partner, which is usually my representation, had a stroke, and she had to take care of him. And she owned two other restaurants. And some of you may know him, is Derek Nakamura, had a stroke. So she had to 24/7 him, and then she kind of like fell behind on bookkeeping and stuff. I didn't realize until it was too late.
Sorry to hear about that. You folks can now file online, so perhaps next year, maybe get ahead of it, so that you folks aren't late for a third year. Okay? Motion to approve the recommended fine of $300.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 26, the recommended fine of $300 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 27, Vukas YKQ.
This licensee, this licensee, there was a miscommunication, and this licensee does want to contest this charge, so I'm requesting a continuance to November 21st, 2019.
21st? 21st?
November 21st.
Motion to continue, agenda item 27, to November 21st, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 27 is continued to November 21st, 2019. Calling agenda item number 28, Hampton Suite Shop.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Commission members, Kenneth Hu appearing for the licensee. To my right is Wade Stevrayala, W.A.D.E.G.E.S.T.E.U.Y.A.L.A., General Manager of the Licensee. Do you wave reading of the charge? And then to a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 28, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is a second violation of sale of liquor to a minor. The last violation was on May 13th, 2017. This was part of the compliance enforcement project. Such, I recommend a fine of $2,000.
Mr. Hu?
This is our second offense, and this is a alcohol and compliance enforcement project violation. Since that violation in February, we have, have retraining for the employees. We've put a placard, which is updated every day to show what birth date that the customer must be born on before, before a sale should be conducted. This is a vertical ID situation also, but the record won't note that the minor in this case would have turned twenty-one in seven days. So I don't know whether the clerk was confused on what. She says, I looked at it and I thought it was okay, but it's one week.
This happened in the shop, not the restaurant, right? This is...
Well, at the, where we conduct the sales, it's in the shop.
The lobby area.
Yeah, in the lobby area, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Motion to convene into executive session, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we are now in executive session. Okay, thank you. We are now back on the official record. Commissioners?
Mr. Lou, what if any discipline was issued to the employee while doing the transaction?
Employee was suspended.
And you talked about retraining, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, they were, they had, they sat through the videos to watch all of the training what actually put on by the Liquor Commission staff, just how to conduct sales to customers, how to check IDs, how not to serve to over-intoxicate people.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, ABC Store, number ninety-one.
All right, good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Paul Kosasa, President and CEO, P.A.U.L.K.O.S.A.S.A. To my right is Mr. Vernon Lee, V.E.R.N.O.N.L.E.E. He is the store manager of ABC number ninety-one.
Thank you. Ms. Neely?
The charge is on or about February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensees sold, served or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor to a minor, by a minor, specifically Edna Lynn Nakapoye, at the licensed premises in violation of Section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii Revise Stages.
Mr. Kosasa, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
This is a first violation, it was also part of the Alcohol Compliance Enforcement Project, the clerk did not ask for ID in this case. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Gentlemen, any comment?
Yes, we accept full responsibility. The employee was terminated. We have a policy, you sell to a minor even if for the first time they lose their job. For my personal philosophy, the fine in itself is, you know, we pay that, but to lose a young woman in our employment after one month of being on duty is actually more painful for me. We go through train, a lot of training, orientation, she gets trained. She is partnered up with a senior cashier, a body system that's with her throughout her training periods with the register. The store is a busy store. She admitted full responsibility, it was her negligence, and so she was ungrateful for her honesty, and so we terminated her. As for minors, it's my experience that there's, they seem to think that they have nothing to lose, so they can buy fake IDs. They were chanted, they'll come into many retail operations, not just ABC stores, and yet there's no disincentive, if you will, that I know of, to send a message to the minors that it's illegal, can't be buying alcohol. And unless our state legislature does something to balance the, balance the situation, we will continually have minors either trying to buy cigarettes or alcohol or other substances that are legal, and it's up to us retailers and other restaurants and businesses to enforce the law, and we agree with that. We just maybe need the administration to help us with, with trying to balance it out. Otherwise, our kids are going to keep trying it. You want that?
Ms. Neely, was this part of our compliance?
Correct.
So that's where the difference is, Mr. Kosasa. This is our opportunity to make sure that all of our licensees are complying.
That's correct.
This is not a regular minor coming in that has nothing to lose. It's a person that has a purpose, to make sure that our licensees are complying. And had she done and followed her training that you have provided, you would not be sitting here today. So I, I've, there's a difference between minors have nothing to lose. She was also, your employee was also arrested?
Yes, she went to court.
So they do have a lot to lose.
Yeah, she does, she knew that.
You know, don't drown your future, as our advertisement is going on throughout the news media, because that's on your record. And it's, it's a serious, you know, a serious offense.
It is.
But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And legislative session is coming up, so perhaps work on that.
I'll work on it, thank you very much.
What, what did this employee offer as far as an explanation why not even requesting for an ID or why not IDing at all?
She just basically blanked out, I think, yes.
I mean, like, you know, most, most people offered explanation, they were busy, there was a line behind them, they just was trying to get the sale through, but I'm trying to understand, to balance off your statement about what these minor situation is, I'm trying to understand your situation in which your staffing ratio or what was the reasoning why an ID wasn't even asked at all? So there wasn't even a due diligence process to even attempt to figure out what the age was? So was that ever asked or why?
Yeah, so it was busy. She admitted that she didn't check ID. The fact that she didn't even ask was grounds for termination, and we did. So she's not in our company anymore.
Mr. Kosasa, I respectfully disagree with some of your comments. You mentioned that your concern was over your employee, but we're concerned over the minors who are trying to test the system as you described, and importantly, the people that may be impacted if and when they purchase, consume alcohol and endanger the public. So I think you as a licensee, and I know you folks have a lot of stores, you have a heightened responsibility to make sure this doesn't happen again, because this is a compliance check, and one of the concerns, what we don't know is how many minors were served at this store or any of your other stores. I'll stop there, but I want to ask, in terms of communicating to your other stores, whether it's the managers or employees, what information is disseminated to further educate the managers and employees to make sure this doesn't occur again?
The entire chain knows that this associate was terminated, including all of our cashiers. She was the poster girl, if you so to speak, that the policies and the law is serious. And so anybody who values their job knows this, so that's message enough. Maybe just one more comment? You know, we, we go to the high schools, we ask for volunteers, they're minors. We're asking them to do something that, if, that is illegal, right? It's a compliance check, I admit. If they get away with it, what do those minors say to their classmates back in high school? Oh, yeah, I was successful. I busted a cashier. That means, does that give you, you know where I'm going with this, that?
Yeah, I'll stop you there.
Yeah, you know, it's just like, hey, well, you know what? If I can do it...
Sorry, Mr. Kosasa, these aren't high school students, they're usually, I believe, UH medical school students and, you know, so they're, they're just under the age of twenty-one. So they're, you know, scholars and we're not taking any kids that are in high school or under eighteen, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right, any other comments, Commissioners? Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Okay, thank you, you started a long...
No, 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 it's a good educational system for conversation for everyone. Let's move on to agenda item number thirty, Temora's Market, Mr. Zebakalau and Mr. Mita.
Aye. Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zebakalau, here on behalf of Temora Enterprises, DPA Temora Market. To my right is Mike Mita, M.I.K.E., M.I.T.A. He's the Director of Operations for Temora's. Unfortunately, Glenn was scheduled to come over, he was on Maui for the opening of a new store, but he was unable to get to the airport in time and so he missed his flight. So we'll be handling the adjudication today. We weigh reading of the charges and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
This is actually a third violation, there were previous violations on May fifth, twenty eighteen, and September fourteenth, twenty eighteen. This was also part of the Alcohol Compliance Enforcement Project. The clerk asked for ID and received a vertical ID, but proceeded to sell the liquor to the minor. I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars, but as Commissioners are aware, they have discretion to impose what penalty they see as appropriate. I will also note for the record that for their last, for their violation on May fifth, twenty eighteen, they were fined two thousand with one thousand suspended unless there was a previous violation, another violation within one year.
Okay. And so that has been within one year, correct?
Correct, that was twenty eighteen.
Gentlemen, three times in two years, serious violation, selling to minors, and as Chair will always say, this is a compliance check, which means how many other minors have bought from your store and you haven't got caught? You know, so this gives us great pause. What can you tell the Commission to reassure us that this is gonna not become a continuous pattern?
Thank you. You know, first and foremost, we apologize, we take full responsibility for this. This is the Kalailoa Market. As we previously stated, actually, I'll take a step back. This was part of the, one of the compliance checks that happened with some of the previous minor altercations that happened. It was just scheduled out a little bit longer, so since we impose our new procedures, we have not had any minor violations since the last time we were here in front of this commission. One of the main contributing factors to that has been a two-point check policy. Originally, we had planned to implement scanning of all IDs, and we are, you know, we were very eager to do that. Unfortunately, the DCCA stepped in and said that it was not appropriate to do so. So after a lengthy discussion with them, we came up with the appropriate procedures to still use that technology, just on more of a limited capacity. So since that time, we've instituted a two-check policy where if there is any vertical ID that is identified at any of our stores, it is immediately taken to the manager, the manager checks it, and then the cashier is allowed to ring up the alcohol or tobacco sale. So far, that's worked out pretty well for us. Additionally, this being one of our markets, the scanning technology was not available as they are slowly being integrated into the market because of the amount of POS transactions that we have to input into the system for the scanning technology. On top of that, we have been trying to do our best to curb any of these situations, and I think that we've reached a point where we're confident in our staff, we're confident in our procedures, and, you know, as long as they're all followed correctly, hopefully this will never happen again. We would like to reengage with the technology as soon as we can. We're actually looking at working with the legislature in the upcoming session to see how we can better implement that, and that's not just for us. We understand that there's many others who deal with this same problem. So if we are able to find a solution where technology helps, it does remove a human component from this. And once again, we apologize, you know, we take full responsibility for this. On top of that, I can add a few more points just for this specific location. You know, this, this was a location where we were unfortunately hit by one of the recent storms. We'd lost about ninety thousand dollars in spoilage, and the store was forced to close for a period of eight to nine days, I believe? Twelve days. Twelve days. During that time, I can't release the exact amount of sales because of CBI, but it was well into the six-figure category. So a suspension would definitely force this store into some very dire circumstances. And while we understand it's entirely our responsibility, we just want to make sure to present that to the Commission for your consideration.
Very good, Mr. Zebakalau, but let me just, after reviewing your gross liquor sales, there's no reason why you couldn't have implemented your service, even with the ninety thousand due to the natural. You gross liquor sales from that store is half a million dollars, correct? Close?
Yes.
Okay, so that is not a valid excuse to this Commissioner. And...
No excuses, we have no excuses.
What happened with the cashier that sold to the minor in this instance?
The cashier is terminated. We have a policy that any of our employees that sell alcohol or tobacco to minors are in here.
And Temora's has been in business in Hawaii for a long time, yeah?
Yes.
How long you folks been in, well, I know this store is more recently open, but you folks have been on the West Side for a long time, yeah?
The company is, the West Side store is separate from us.
Right, right.
Yeah, so...
I understand, but as you...
Since ninety-five, since nineteen ninety-five.
This is Barbara's point, do you all consider?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
So I'll make this comment is, you know, I think Temora's footprint in every community is a prominent footprint for Kapolei West Siders, and it is their preference and choice, more preferably to be purchasing from your market. Personally, for myself, I rely on your services, so it would be a huge detriment for you guys to be losing a license or to be suspended in sales, which would affect people, the good people who are trying to purchase. And when you weigh out the services, it really is a lose-lose situation. And I know a lot of people on that side depend, depend on your services, and the store predominantly, and just really be conscious about your future there, you know what I mean? Because this license is practically your future, and without it, you guys won't be in existence. So preserving this license and continuing to come here, it is just, it's hard on us, and it's hard to justify, and it's hard, it's, it's, it's hard to be here, to be here, just presenting the evidence that we have.
It doesn't give us any pleasure to see you guys here for these kind of violations especially.
We entirely understand, and thank you Vice Chair. We do try our best to be an integral part of the community. We are a family-run business. We try and give back through the Temora's Foundation as much as we can to the local schools that are around us. And it, it pains us as well to have these types of situations occur, because there are a number of local residents who do prefer our markets contrary to other, the larger chains, just because of some of the services as well as the people that they know. So we are and will make it as much of an effort as we can to make sure that we do better.
Well, in closing, before Vice Chairman makes her decision, if you can't pass the compliance, how many other minors have you sold to? That's, that's, that's our issue, you know what I mean? Especially in that area, you know what I mean? Because once you get outside Barbara's Point, it's a speedway, you know what I mean? The roads are wide open and, you know, something really, really terrible could happen to some... If somebody is drunk and driving and they die, they made a bad choice. But if an innocent family is on the other side of the road and they get broadsided or rear-ended or anything and, and they lose a life, then that's our responsibility to protect against that.
Absolutely, Chair.
And the youth challenge is right across you folks as well, right, or on base, further down to the right?
But we don't let them in the store.
Yeah. My brother-in-law...
No, we were told not to allow them to the store.
Yeah, my brother-in-law works there, so you probably talk to my brother-in-law, who's a coach there, and make sure that those kids don't end up at your store, not for a bag of chips or nothing. So just knowing the area, yeah, you guys are challenged, but yet you guys do have a good customer base that is, that rely on you folks heavily, I mean, really, like, it's such a good place to be. It just, like I said, preserve the license as much as you guys can.
Everyone likes fresh porky, not frozen porky, but fresh porky.
I do have a question, Mr. Zebakalau. It seems to me, just recently, you provided the Commission with a pretty detailed plan to prevent this from happening. Do you recall how long ago you made that plan?
So we did two different plans. The first plan was the first minor violation, which is approximately two years ago. When we did come back for the second one, we updated the plan.
And when was that last?
I believe that that was in May or June of this year, something like that.
But in any event, it was after this particular violation?
The scanning of the IDs, that was in May. Yeah, so it was, it was after this violation, it was part of the same group of violations for the compliance check. This cer, this certain violation was scheduled out on the calendar longer.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, this violation happened on February twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, right?
Yeah.
So seeing as how the, there's been a second violation within one year, the remainder of the, the remaining one thousand dollars, my motion is to approve that as in addition to two thousand dollars for this fine, for a total of three thousand dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars plus the one thousand... The recommended fine of two thousand dollars plus the one thousand dollar for a previous violation is collectible, is approved for a total of three thousand dollars.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Calling agenda item number thirty-one, Costco Wholesale.
Uh, this licensee is unavailable and requested a continuance to O, October thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-one, to October thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-one is continued to October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Costco Wholesale.
Again, this attorney requested a continuance to October thirty-first. I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-two, to October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-two is continued to October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Do we have any, agenda item number thirty-three, administrative matters? Not too many, nope. Meeting is adjourned.